Let's go ahead and get this city council meeting going. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whatever being just as strong.
All right, well, welcome everyone. I will start with our traditional review of tonight's agenda. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We will then get to public comment. Jeff, anyone submitted online or in person?
No, Mayor.
All right, we have no responses to the previous meeting either. We'll then get into the consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our August nineteenth meeting, an approval of an IGA with DLCD for the housing and production strategy, as well as a contract approval for the water management and conservation plan update. Under proclamations, we get to celebrate the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce seventy-fifth anniversary. Under resolutions, we have two public hearings tonight. One to adopt a methodology for the transit system development charge methodology, as well as the rate afterwards as well.
Transportation.
Transportation. What did I say? That's weird. Yeah, transportation. Under old business, design for the mining memorial park improvements and restoration. Under new business, contract award for Deer Point Park Development Phase Two, as well as a declaration of the city council vacancy for seat five and an adoption of a process to fill a vacancy for the city council seat number five. Well, then round off the evening with a report from the city manager, as well as committee and council reports. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
That's Councilman Mayton.
President.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. With that, we'll get to the consent agenda, which has the city council meeting minutes from the nineteenth, the IGA with DLCD, as well as a contract approval for the water management conservation plan. So if there's questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Make the motion. Don't ask to do it.
Make a motion to adopt the consent.
There are second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Councilor Hockinson, a second by Councilor Sheldon to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Moving ahead to proclamations for the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce has served to support businesses in our community for over seven decades. And whereas the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce enhances the quality of life in our city by fostering and strengthening relationships between local businesses. And whereas the stated purpose of the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce is to advocate for a healthy, responsible and diverse business environment and provide the resources, tools and connections that help businesses succeed. And whereas the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce provides a variety of networking and learning opportunities, as well as resources for business, career education, marketing assistance and support for area tourism. And whereas twenty twenty-four marks the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce, I now therefore, I stand Pulliam, mayor of the city of Sandy, do hereby proclaim as follows. The city of Sandy publicly expresses its gratitude and appreciation of the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce for providing seventy-five years of dedicated service to the Sandy community dated this third day of September twenty twenty-four. Congratulations to the Sandy area Chamber of Commerce. All right, with that, we will move ahead to our resolutions. First one being a public hearing on resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen concerning the transportation system development charge methodology. I will open the public hearing for twenty twenty-four dash seventeen at seven oh four P M. Are there any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest? Tyler, can you please provide the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council will likely recall several discussions we've had leading up to this date. Two work sessions, one in March and one in May, and a follow-up conversation at a regular meeting in May as well, discussing the transportation system development charges. The last update to the methodology was in spacing on the date now, twenty
Two thousand and twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. Thank you, Kelly.
That might not be exact.
It's been several years since the actual methodology has been revised. We've updated the transportation system plan recently, which included all of the aspirational listed projects for our community's transportation needs. And then held those work sessions to talk about the merits of the methodology. FCS group who completed the methodology for us is here this evening. If you have any remaining questions around how the methodology was drafted or anything specific with that. Ultimately, at the May twentieth council meeting, staff was given direction to proceed with noticing and moving forward with methodology as presented and also moving forward with an increase of the transportation system development charge from the four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars that it currently is to nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars for a single family. We have the methodology prepared this evening to, if adopted, be become effective immediately. And should the rate become, should the rate be adopted as well, that will become effective October first of twenty twenty-four. Concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, I will now call for public testimony. Here are some guidelines for those of you who may wish to speak. Please do try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to say that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you have to say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email those materials to recorder at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you wish to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine in order to, in quote, raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will then call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes. Our studio recorder Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules, whether you like to or not, require each person to state your name and address for the record. I will now call in on any testimony for the proposed resolution.
Hey, Mayor, not seeing any hands in the room. Checking online. And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Awesome. Thank you for that. I'll now call for the staff recap recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recap is that we have updated T S P and should update our methodology for the transportation S D C to reflect that transportation system plan. So staff would recommend adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen.
All right, so our motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
There are second.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Walker to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. Public hearing closed at seven oh eight. All right, discussion. Sounds like we all think it's good. Press.
I just have a question.
Okay.
Just remind you, because one of the reasons why we voted for this level of methodologies is because we did not have all the rates of S D Cs combined. When will be able to revisit S D Cs? So we could potentially increase this.
Yeah, absolutely. We have F C F's group currently working on the water S D C. Well underway there. We expect to bring that back. I don't want to give you an exact date, but before the end of the year.
Without wastewater.
Wastewater is a little bit trickier because we still have to finalize that facilities plan amendment before we can move forward with the S D C methodology. Without going into too much of a tangent around that facilities plan amendment. Yeah, well, so I asked the question over the weekend about the possibility of updating the wastewater S D C without an adopted facilities plan amendment, given that we have an idea of what costs will be, but they're not finalized yet. And so is there a number we can back into to at least get that S D C updated with the known project costs and recognizing that there might be some flexibility that still needs to take place once the facility plan amendment is adopted. I have not gotten an answer back, but that was just Sunday morning, I think, when I sent that email. So that will be, as soon as we have an answer to that, we'll start working on the wastewater S D C as well.
So once we get that, we can revisit the totality of these decisions and we have the opportunity to make a change if we're to.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. And the methodology for the, or I'm sorry, the resolution for the methodology, nothing will need to change with that. It would just be a simple resolution to update the rate limit if the council decides to do that. Very quick, quick implementation.
All right, before we make the motion, just clarification note. So I've been calling in ordinance. It's actually a resolution. So it's resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, not ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. Awesome. If you just need a motion, a second and approval. So is there a motion?
I move to adopt resolution twenty four, twenty twenty-four dash seventeen.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Sheldon, a second by Councilor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right, thank you for that. We're going to move into our next public hearing for the rate. I open organ, I open resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one at seven eleven. No slurpy though. Are there any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest? Tyler, you got that staff report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. So the council just heard a brief recap. Much of this recap here will be similar to what you just heard. We have a T S P that was updated recently. Now we have a transportation system development charge methodology that has also been updated. There was some robust conversation in May around what changes should be made to the S D C rate for transportation. Ultimately, at that meeting, the council felt most comfortable with this medium and high priority projects, which translated to a nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollar S D C. Counselor Mayton asked a great question earlier that I'll be sure to touch on during this recap, which is that that number was sort of arrived upon based on not having all of the updated S D Cs for water and wastewater and having a holistic picture of where S D Cs will likely go in the future. So all that to say, this sort of medium and high priority projects is a great start in building up our street fund, again, our transportation fund for future capital projects. And we can modify that rate in the future once we have updated the water and wastewater S D Cs. But for now, this was the rate that staff was provided direction in. And so modifying the S D C from four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars to nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen is the recommend, excuse me, the recommendation this evening.
All right, we'll move ahead to public testimony. Here are those guidelines again. Please try to avoid the repetition. Someone's already said it. They can say it. If they have document, if you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by our hearing body, you need to send those to our recorder. It's Jeff over there, recorder at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure the evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, if you're here, just raise your hand. If you're participating online, you click that raised hand button on the Zoom. If you're telephone, you dial star nine. I'll call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Get three minutes. Jeff, let you know if you have twenty seconds left. And you do need to tell us your name and address. Serious this time. Call for the test, I'm now calling for the testimony on the proposed resolution.
Hey, Mayor, not seeing any raised hands in the room. We do have one raised hand online. So I'll go ahead and click the button. You should be able to unmute yourself now. As the mayor indicated, please state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Kendall Pelkin and I live in the city of Sandy. I'm opposed to any further rate increases until you have all your S D Cs together.
We've let that go too many times. You need to submit an address for people.
Kendall, excuse me, so we'll, we'll go ahead and ask you to unmute again, but we do need to have your name and address for the record.
For my safety, my address is already logged within the city and I live in the city of Sandy. So I'm saying I don't agree with any rate increases until you have all your S D Cs because as it is, we have a senior living by themselves, not watering the lawn, not doing daily things that would increase water and they're paying over two hundred and forty dollars a month. That's ridiculous. We need to get the fees cohesive and to a point where people can actually reside and live on them.
Thank you, Kendall. And we just, let's talk offline. We have got to button up for, if we either need to change our, change the rules and structure, or we need to develop a process for people actually take a body by them, either one. I don't care which one it is, but let's just get like within compliance. All right, any others?
No, Mayor, I don't see any other raised hands.
Thank you. With that, I will call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. So just recapping, this fee increase this evening for the transportation S D C is reflective of the conversation that was had at the end of May with the council and the direction that was provided at that point in time. Point of clarification that this is a system development charge, not a rate. So this is paid for at the time of new construction. When someone pulls a building permit, this is not a, a fee that is paid for by current, you know, residents or homeowners that are watering their lawn or
Rate payers.
Rate payers on the utility side of things. Apologies if that wasn't made clear earlier in the conversation, but this is a a fee that's specifically associated with new development. And with that, staff recommends adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, updating the transportation system S D C.
Thank you for that, Tyler. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilor Sheldon and a second by Councilor Hockinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. Closed at seven seventeen. All right, discussion or a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Walker, a second by Councilor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. Awesome. Thank you, everybody for that. Thank you, Kelly. Let's move ahead to old business. The design for mining memorial park improvements and restoration.
Hello, everybody.
So while they're getting set up, I'll just give you some brief background here. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Eric. I appreciate it.
Thanks, y'all.
So you may be feeling like a bit of deja vu because we did talk about mining park at a work session about a month or so ago now. Parks Board has also had a conversation around the, the same presentation that you received several weeks ago. And there's an open house here this week to talk about mining park and the amenities there. And so with that, this is follow-up from that work session. I'll take it over to Rochelle to
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, and I'll say just a little bit more of a good evening, Council Mayor. It is great to be here tonight. This is the second time we've been in front of council speaking about mining park. And we just want to recap a little bit on what we had heard from the Parks Board, summarizing what we had heard from you all last time. There's going to be areas that we're going to talk about tonight that are focus areas. And I just want to remind the council that the focus areas are not necessarily priorities that we're trying to list. However, areas that during this renovation and improvement that we're looking at focus areas. And there'll be a time, and it's not quite now at this point, where we'll bring back before you cost estimates. We'll talk about applicable funds, how we plan to fund this, very similar how we got to where Cedar Park is today. So just want to put that out there right now. So some of the focus areas that we're going to talk about tonight are No Name Creek and that restoration and what we pulled from the two thousand eleven, two thousand seventeen plans. We'll talk about the pathways. There was some in-hill seating that was pulled over from the previous designs. We've got Fantasy Forest, which is going to be, I think, a fun conversation tonight, one that I think is, you know, lead to some really good ideas. It's far as it's a very cherished community asset. And so we really encourage the council to, you know, what are your opinions on Fantasy Forest as we move forward? And we'll talk about some of the things we've heard to date regarding safety of Fantasy Forest and, and what that future looks like for that. And I guess at this point, just to remind everybody, we do have an open house September fifth at the community center, starting at six o'clock. And we've been encouraging the community to come to that and provide input. And in fact, we were just down there talking to the neighbors, hoping they would join us and let us know how they feel about this wonderful community park. So and then it will be back in front of council October ninth. So I guess without further ado, I will share my screen if Jeff will let me. And
All needs a promotion. There we go.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
It's temporary.
Yeah, I will, I will get my, my rights revoked. All right, it's somebody joining. Okay.
You'd think we'd have the Zoom stuff dialed in by this point.
It's ready to get on the surface. I'm listening.
Ooh, can we see it? Yay. All right. Okay, well, now that we're, we've got that, I will, I'll hand it over to Brian.
Yeah, as Rochelle said, we're excited to be here tonight. And it's really a continuation of the conversation that we had here a month or so ago, as well as that other conversation that's similar taking place with the Parks Board. And it'll be continuing on this Thursday night with the public and really engaging them with this process of the improvements to mining park and these focus areas and really starting with the work that's been done and piggybacking off that basically fact finding, does that still that planning work from twenty eleven, twenty seventeen, how does that fit into twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five moving forward? Making sure that those priorities are still appropriate and so just a quick touch on the existing conditions. I think everyone is quite familiar with mining park right behind us here, Don Hill. And if you look at the next slide, as has been mentioned, there's these five focus areas that we've honed in on that were established in prior planning documents. And that we've at our last meeting together and with the Parks Board, established an almost parallel group of focus areas just for ultimately for originally for feedback to make sure that we were headed in the right direction, that these were still appropriate focus areas. And one thing to remind folks that came out of that was there was the, previously we'd put out there based on previous planning, the dog park and from multiple groups and this group included. It was really concluded that that wasn't a priority at this time. So that's no longer a focus area that we're highlighting at this point. And it's not something that we're going to be sharing with the public on Thursday. But what has been added, one, one last touch on that was the parking lot, just the lower parking lot right behind the building here, shown as number five, as another focus area of improvements. Maybe a little bit more prescriptive in nature than some of the other improvements, but still important nonetheless. So we'll touch on that towards the end. So as we touch back on
Can I have one question on that previous slide? So is that going to, that lower parking lot going to be the main ADA parking? Or, or I guess it could be down below too.
And I think that there are multiple areas. There, there will be ADA parking. There's the potential to have it in that lower space, but it's not dependent on that. As you mentioned, in the lowest parking lot, there's accessible parking there. Then also part of the plan, moving forward with the update of the trails would be to have accessible parking right where the stairs are now and a ramp that would connect right from the parking lot behind us into the park. So that would be yet another accessible route that way.
And as long as you're on that slide, that private property, because in that little carve out, yeah, in that area, do we know who owns that?
That's where the apartments are going.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's the one that's been developed and some apartments.
Isn't that right, Kelly?
Townhomes, twelve townhomes. It's apartments. That was correct. It's apartments.
Okay, so we'll want to keep that in mind as we're thinking about this and move forward.
So the first focus area is
Sorry, so we're, but we're not making, other than access improvements, we're not doing any improvements to the parking lot or anything up here, though. We're not like adding spots or anything like
It's pretty constrained as it is. So it's really a resurfacing of the parking that's there and striping it to have the accessible parking.
And as part of this study, have we thought about with the long-term parking like fit for this park should be, like, are we meeting those demands? Are we going into the future meeting those demands?
That's a great question. And that is something that we're looking at. Just to, you know, there's so many and not so many, there's several different access points to the park and different types of events throughout the year. And yeah, what is that parking demand and are we
Well, I would tell, ask council then, as you're looking at the facility plan and how these all match together. You're sitting in a really expensive parking lot. Like, you know, as you're thinking about what to do with this location, the Sandy net investments and all of that, that is our main park. You need additional parking. So it's something to be thinking about. So it's, sorry, thank you.
No, it's all good. So the first focus area here on this slide is No Name Creek in the improvements to the existing conditions there to really spruce up that ribbon flowing through the park. And we, we touched on some of the, some of the process last time, but just to highlight what that'll look like. I think this first slide is kind of a graphic of some of the, the focus areas of what the improvements are. The circle with the number one there in the top center shows some of the access points, and these are highlighted along No Name Creek with those small orange and red bump outs. So these are off of the existing or the realigned pathways are paved areas that come out close to the creek and then a series of tiered steps down to the water's edge, really picking up on some of the planning work that was done before the layout and the location. But as we talked about with, with the Parks Board, just really providing focused areas of access. So it's not just a free for all the whole edge of the creek is accessible, but really trying to focus our revegetation efforts, both three and four, but also giving people the opportunity to get down there and to touch the creek. And the last one I'll touch on is number two, just the stream bank restoration. There's the existing photos that we looked at a month ago. There's just quite a bit of erosion that's been happening over the years, partly due to people interested, people just getting down to the water's edge. So really shoring up that edge.
My apologies. I was over here a month ago, so maybe if I'm rehashing stuff, you guys let me know. But during heavy rain in the winter, that little creek can flow. And if we put anything permanent down into that area, it's going to look like those stairs down to the beach when the king tide comes, they're going to be gone or damaged or stairs to nowhere.
Good, yeah. Can you go back to that previous slide? So the, so what we are showing now is that all the access points will be on the, that is the south side of the creek.
Trail side, yeah.
And so, you know, typically people are down there for movies in the park and the concerts and everything, and the kids are sitting on the blankets and then running, you know. And so I'm just wondering what the potential is of having, and it's kind of, you know, it's not really, well, I don't know, maybe it is staircase, but what I guess we were envisioning was kind of just more flat rocks that kids, that could be anchored in into the ground, but, but also provides, you know, access to kids getting into the creek and having a couple of access points on the big grassy, because that's where they're going to go. That's where they go now. And so I don't know if that's, it's potential to have, you know, at least one or maybe two on that side. I, I get that having the access from the trail is good, but, but it's usually they're doing, playing in it while the parents are just usually sitting there. So
Those are both really good points. And I guess to the first one, that what you were describing is at least what I had in mind, what I was understanding, the original documents is basically stone slabs. So they're anchored into place and structurally sound. And to the, to your second point, you're right. It, it feels like there's a lot of public access demand to the, I guess, the plan west side here. As we were making one of the boards for the presentation on Thursday this afternoon, I saw there's one. It shows up on this slide, actually. It's very hard to see, but there's one flat area on the, that side that we're discussing that was on the original plan. So at the very least, they, they acknowledged that, but that's something they, for us to consider moving forward is where thinking about where the most demand is and responding accordingly. So while we're on this slide, this was just one of the sheets taken from that original design work. So this is showing, and we'll add some color to this when we show it to the public, but it's basically showing the channel right now, restoration efforts of vegetation on the sides of it, along with these stepped access points. And then just really specifically the types of plants that they called out and where those would be planted, how closely be planted and the process for re-vegetating the appropriate areas along the creek.
You've, you've told everybody at some point that it's going to forever be that yellowy, orange, gold color and you can't get it out, right? Like they all, they all know that. I just would hate for people to think that you restored it and it's going to be blue water and then it's Like they all, they all know that. I just would hate for people to think that you restored it and it's going to be blue water and then it's not.
But we're designing the vegetation to complement those colors.
Yeah, I get it, but I just make it sure that that was the original.
Exactly.
Okay, cool.
If an interpretive side would not, would not go in this.
Carl for years would ask and be told.
Was he trying to get it cleaned up?
I don't, they wanted it, but it's impossible. So. I think we just rename it Gold Lake or Gold Stream.
It's no longer no name. It hasn't.
So that's resolution.
The next focus area we want to touch in on is Fantasy Forest. And last time we talked about the existing conditions there and how so much of the work, the wood there is in a state of decline and the Parks Department has for many years been repairing that diligently, but it's just really past the end of its life cycle. And I think before I jump into the options, that's something that's really important that we effectively communicate starting Thursday to the public so that they understand it's served its purpose and it really does for everybody's safety need to be replaced at this point. It's not just a matter of replacing a couple more four by fours one more time and it's, it's okay, but it's, it really is based on everybody's assessment that's been out there. Technical expertise says it needs to be reconstructed from the ground up. So starting from that point, just, just ensuring that we're communicating that effectively, I think.
I don't think you can.
It's a heavy lift.
Hard story. I mean, you can't convince me and I think you're going to have our company listen to anyone else too.
You know, I just, before, when I was looking through your stuff, I went to, I just Googled leather's playground. How long does it last or something like that? And it said first right up there, 25 years. And then I'm like, yep, it's 25 years. That's how long it's been.
Yeah.
So.
Twenty, twenty-nine.
It's ninety-nine, forty-five years.
And it was a great conversation too amongst the Parks Board about this exact topic, about whether we replace, repair. And the consensus of the park board was the fact that it's at, you know, the twenty-nine years, it's, it's beyond its useful life. It's a safety concern. So and that's where the fun conversation comes in as far as the options that Brian will be offering up today, getting a sense from the council. You know, what's currently there? Are we, do we want to honor what's there, but getting the feedback and really making sure that we engage the public in this conversation? So when we do put something in there, it's a signature piece.
Yeah, it's not just a surprise when it shows up like.
So Rochelle, I know we've had some conversations about these. As a parent, it's occurred to me in the past, as I've mentioned, the assignment, I can panic mode the entire time trying to find my kid, right? Because there's a lot of hidden areas. As I'm looking at one of these, you mentioned to me a casual conversation that you think over the years they've tried to change some things to make that less of a problem. I'm seeing these structures are a lot less like total blocking as what we currently have. So is this kind of what you were talking about in this conversation, maybe? Where it's a little easier to spot the little ones running around.
Yep, exactly. And, and Brian can chime in on that too, but that we, we actually received the same feedback from the Parks Board. And so that, that was something, and then the conversation of after hours, people having a nook to hide and
Sure.
hide there. So we've been mindful of that, but I don't know if I had anything.
Well, yeah, and definitely that, your, your last point is just something that's an ongoing evolution of a conversation where it's just, it's not something, it wasn't necessarily at all the same level of consideration when it was, when Fantasy Forest was originally installed. So it's a very different thing that we're discussing and, and planning for now. It's absolutely on our mind.
Yeah. So, so one of the things, just to add a little bit for, to your question, it was brought up by the Parks Board meeting, correct me if I misunderstood, but was that these are conceptual ideas and even these could be opened up so that, so that you could see more if you, if you, if you wanted. So.
Yeah. And I think with that, that's definitely to tag onto that is we have three different options we want to put in front of the group tonight. And these, it's not a pick and choose which is your favorite A, B, or C, but it's, the idea is to get some feeling, some play feelings out there, some ideas, some styles and not just colors, but overall approaches to playgrounds. And, and so it's not like these are what we're locked into or these are the only choices on the table. It's, it's basically a starting point, I would say for an overall conversation for us to continue to take what we hear tonight and what we hear at the public open house on Thursday and what we heard from the Parks Board and really bring all those ideas together. So it's unless, you know, I am totally surprised and everybody just loves one of the options, which is typically not ever the case.
And we consider, we're considering all abilities too.
Absolutely. Yeah. So without further ado, walk through this one real quickly. I think of the three, this one really in style and theme sticks closest to Fantasy Forest as it is today. And I think where this takes a turn is with more modern materials, these, the wood, you don't necessarily see it in the, the image size that we have here, but it's, it's more of a recycled wood, metal posts and recycled wood horizontals as well. As has been talked about, it's a bit more open and transparent. So from the outside you can see through, there's much more clear lines of sight. You still have the multi-layers of climbing up to higher levels. And in terms of accessibility, this one's probably the most traditional in that sense and, and dare I say, at least forward thinking, it's more the traditional transfer, transfer platforms, getting from the ground level with people experiencing mobility, disabilities, getting from like point A to point B. It's not so much a series of ramps and grade changes. It's some of the platform from A to B, like by various steps to get up to the top. This one has a number of different slides, some chain, some vertical climbing elements. As I mentioned, some higher forts, a lot of, I think overall types of play elements that we would all be familiar with from regional parks in the area.
Like a swing sense, does that, or is that included here? And I just don't see it.
It's on the left in the upper image. It's very faint, but it's behind that major slide element.
Yeah.
And that's the kind of thing that I think if there's the, you know, those are very typically very popular. So that's something that we can absolutely incorporate into any, any one of these swings or spinning elements. So this second option really takes the idea of those forts and is a much more modern interpretation of that. It says a series of three or four vertical columns, these sky forts with a series of slides coming off of them. And I think that the access would be probably similar to option A in terms of people experiencing any, or people with, using mobility devices to get around. This one has this whole series of tactile panels on the insides. And again, maybe a series of transfer in the bottom, kind of one of the center images there, you see a series of transfer decks to get up to the higher levels. Has some pretty amazing net climbers to get from area to area. And then unfortunately, just off screen in the bottom right image, it has this whole network of a net scramble. And then one last thing to, sorry, one, one piece to touch on that is just looking, putting out the idea in the lower left corner of an all-inclusive type of spinner where it's, it's this, it's essentially a merry-go-round, it's accessible. It's flush with the ground. So you can roll right into it. So it's users of all abilities can be on the inside, the outside and inclusive for everyone.
So what all spins on that is the white panels go around?
Yeah. So if you follow the blue lines down, that all spins in the ground. So where the boy is in red in the very middle, he's standing on something that would spin. It's a safety surfacing around that's fixed.
Okay.
And then this last option, I almost want to say like ignore the colors in the beginning, but.
It's hard not to.
So I won't even bother saying it. I take it back. And what I think, so the, the first thing that.
Do we call this the park?
What are you doing?
Well, yeah, if I'm a business owner, I'm so angry about the sandy style stuff.
We did do this.
Something like that. Yeah.
It's like, I just.
What?
Wait, I gotta do what?
We'll paint it brown.
Yeah.
So one thing that in, in doing some image research and, and trying to come up with a variety of players, one, one reason this caught our eye was in the upper, the, both of the upper images, you start to see that this site isn't actually flat. There's quite a bit of gray change. There's the concrete ribbon on the upper left image that wraps around the site, which basically is this built-in ramp. So you can get from the bottom all the way to the top without using any stairs, any, you know, anything that looks like a traditional ramp. It's just, and I, why that matters here is I think it really could be the type of play feature that we integrate into the side of our hillside slope here, where it's not like you look at it and you think, okay, we've made concessions to, it's a very inclusive playground, but here's the obvious reason why. It happens without even knowing it. So it's like true inclusion where kids don't have to take a separate route. It's the route that everyone's taking to get to the top. And inside this one, the bottom left image, you see, so you get to the top and you can travel through this, it's, it's the horizontal, this really bright colored tube there with the, with the light in. And again, this is a place where everyone can get and get to that, like the coolest place on the playground. And there's a tall net climber on the right side, get from the bottom to the top. And I think one thing that starts to show up in this, not to talk too much more about it, is this has a number of different separate play pieces. You have the big structure in the middle, then it starts to break into a number of smaller play elements, spinners. Definitely swings outside of the image here, mounds, teeter totters. So it's really incorporating all levels of play and then people that want to be in, in the mix with everybody, but then also people that want to maybe play off to a side in a more quiet space.
I guess, I don't know that it matters, but I am curious. I mean, so of these three, like kind of different looks, do we know the neighboring or kind of adjacent communities that currently have parks like this up like?
I think the first one is the, the one that's more natural and tucked into the woods is something that we would, I, I can give you a specific answer of where, but I think that one is going to be happening in quite a few of our neighboring communities. The second one was actually an example from down in the Bay Area. It's just a couple of years old. It's more of a custom, not an off-the-shelf element. So I don't think that that specific type of play is necessarily here in the area. And this third one, I think is kind of straddling that semi-custom, semi-off-the-shelf. So we could, I think as we start to, the feedback that we get, I think our homework is to say, here are some similar play, playgrounds in the area to, to point to with these types of features that are more desirable.
And I kind of. Rochelle's, I'm sure, just rolling her eyes, but I kind of took, you know, little screenshots of it and then figured out where they were. Because it's kind of hard to see some of these, you know, with these pictures and stuff, how it really works and what, what happens, but like this, the first one was in Florida. I had the names of them. And then the second one is in, the third one's in Oberlin, Kansas, and the second one's in San Mateo. And yeah, it's, they're really kind of neat.
And one of the homework that we had done too is there, there's really good YouTube videos that show these actual playgrounds with kids interacting. We do have the links with us tonight and I would, you know, I would say based on time, I don't know if this group would be interested in watching them, but they're really great videos out there that show.
Great to have it on the, when you have, when you have your meeting.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, because that gives you a better understanding of how, how it works.
I have some questions or comments on that.
Yeah.
First of all, like I said, if you're going to have a hard time convincing me where we're at, I do think we're 10 years too early talking about this. I'm not, I know we're coming. But the wood and the age of the wood and things like that is affected by sun and other factors. And so when we take a flat 25-year view, my question would be in what climate and in what conditions? Because the wood there is actually better than you would expect to see 25 years and then, for example, or somewhere else. So I think we're a little early in, in heading down this path. That said, going back to your, your site map, if you would, like three or four slides back, we do have opportunities here. Going beyond the purple as you head down to the main parking lot, that slopes down, it never grows, it's always bare. If that were to be incorporated into a future park through these gray changes and things like that, I think that's a very good opportunity, starts to bring it down into that lower level. I like where you're going with that. But I gotta tell you, I mean, I moved here because I came for a job off work and I was driving down 26th. And the first place I saw was in Mining Park and I got out and I smelled the air and I saw that park and that, that whole thing, that's what sold me on this whole area and moving here from Texas. So for me, that's near and dear and it's got to retain that feel because I think the whole community feel is like that. I think if you put in some modern jungle gym in there, I think they'll be just outraged.
I agree with that. I just, I, that's where I'm at. I'm just curious to hear what the community has to say about it. My suspicion is, is that the conservative side in me says that they're gonna like the one that kind of looks a lot similar to what we currently have.
Yeah.
But maybe not, you know, I just think it's important that community gets excited about whatever's going in there and that has a, for all the reasons you just said, I don't think you're the first or last person that might have made their decision to kind of more stay in this community for that park. Got to get it right.
And, and we have other new parks coming out. So we have this new look and feel in Cedar Park now and I don't think they all need to look the same. I think they can have their own very different characters so that as a parent, you know, tonight we'll take our kids here and another time we'll drive over there. It's not just neighborhood.
I do, all that said though, I do think the cosmetics of the park are important for this park though, because like this is the Sandy Mountain Festival Park and this is the Winter Fest Park and this is our center park, right?
Yeah.
Like, so you know, I mean, you do want people feeling like they're in Sandy and to have a certain marketing appeal and cosmetic feel. In addition, that's all, kids need to have fun there for some forms, right? But you, you get what I'm saying.
My question is really around features, because I really like Parks One and Two as well. I was just wondering about maybe, it felt like maybe part, our option two has a different functionality for a more advanced group of child. And I was wondering if there was any way, space, especially using what Don just said about that lower platform to, to use both examples, where you have that, that, you know, similar feel to what we have today, but then on the outskirts have almost more of an advanced rate. It's kind of like we're doing in Cedar Park where we have different element arranged for different age groups. I, I wonder if, if you've considered that because it looked like those two maybe could be combined to make a, a more comprehensive park.
Like I love slides integrated into hills, that sort of thing, you know, because you did that in the Cedar Park.
One thing to touch on in this option that's on the screen right now is to your question, it's the, the part that focuses, the play features that focus more towards that two to five is off-screen just a little bit. So there is a separate play feature for younger kids.
You've just not seen them.
Exactly. Unfortunately, no, but it is, it is addressed. So it's not, the expectation isn't that this larger feature would spread that two to 12. It's a, this is that five to 12 really, and that we would focus our efforts on, get a separate play piece beside that, whether it's integrated or completely separate. Sometimes it works better to have it separate so that those kids, it's, they're not overlapping quite as much. And maybe parents feel better about that, but that's a great point.
Lighting, how are we thinking about lighting? And it started going there just because of the lights in that tunnel. But I'm ending there with the homeless issues we have in that park, right? And just safety factors in the wilderness around that park, like what kind of lighting do we have?
Yeah.
Just a factor.
Yep.
I think, you know, I haven't been to it yet since I don't have our kids yet or anything, but Imagination Station kind of went through the same stressor of, you know, when their old one burned down. There was a, you know, they designed something more like one of these more modern ones and then some people kind of really didn't want that and they wanted another leather thing. So they ended up doing another leather thing and I'm not advocating we do that. But I think, but what I just kind of looked on Google for, for that, I think they did make a lot of changes to to make it more modern, you know, to not have all those closed in things, but also, you know, like the thing that I would really love to see here is that kind of, you know, the spider pyramid things, you're kind of the Christmas tree shaped net climber. Because some of, you know, I mean, with Fantasy Forest, you know, there's a lot of kind of running around and there's, you know, some climbing up steps or whatever, but it's not as challenging acti, you know, for the five to 12-year-olds, you're, you're graded about, you know, seven, eight, but then you're kind of aging out there pretty quick. So just having something like a spider climber or whatever you call it. Would, and they have one at the Imagination Station. I don't think it's as big as I would like, but
Those are really.
Go big or go home, Captain. But, but you know, being able to kind of combine some of that so that you have kind of more challenging things that you find in more, maybe more of two or three. And I'm not saying that we have to go with leathers or anything, because I think you can kind of get that look without necessarily having the same contractor. But yeah, it's a promise. I'm excited to see what the public wants to see.
So the next focus area is the pathway improvements, which my only lead in for this, I will say, is absolutely a work in progress. It's been great to get feedback from each group. And I look forward to the feedback tonight. This is basically, as we've been saying with some of the other focus areas, starting with the work that's already been. basically, as we've been saying with some of the other focus areas, starting with the work that's already been done and I think we're at a place to get more feedback. So this, there's a series of three slides that the first one just shows the existing pathways um that are to be removed and it just to tie back into our presentation last time is for a variety of reasons, either they're not accessible, they're in a state of disrepair. Or they're just not gonna fit with the the future path layout. So then this kind of shows an overlay of the purple that where where it's being removed, so you can see it all at once. And then the orange being the proposed pathway. And again, there's some, there's some key connections here that we're not showing, but that that will show up in the next round. And and basically to
So, so I'm not going to be able to make a full circle. Like right there, where your hand, what was? So I'm walking down the pathway where that that path is going to be removed.
That, so the the section of purple that's there?
Yeah.
That is actually um great observation and that is on our list of bad backs. So that
What do you mean?
That this is not showing it, but that will become orange. So that will be.
So it's coming back.
It's coming back. You haven't lost it yet.
All right, and we're not gonna lose it.
That was also feedback we received from the Parks Board too.
All right.
Well, so part of the, that's, this is great. This is that vetting of what's been designed before and getting feedback from people using the park both before and during that that interim time and.
And back to what the mayor just said about lighting, is this the time when you would install electrical with the new, with the new path so that future events would have the power we need to support additional lighting structure?
Yep, absolutely. And and um and that's on the last side slide as far as amenities that we know are important, that should be included in the renovation and improvements. Yep.
I think the kind of thing to kind of realizes that some of these are ADA and some are not. And so that's why, you know.
ADA is pushing some of this stuff, okay.
Well, yeah. And so, you know, we've got quite a bit of elevation there. Is that, is that right, Brian?
Yeah, and and there are the path that we talked about that lead, that would would lead from this upper parking lot near where the mouse is at, there's a pathway that'll wind down. Yeah, basically where the that right to there. So it's not shown here, but we will be adding that in.
You're gonna have to tell people when the chicken skewers are gone. The uh, the upper purple line to be removed, how is it cost effective to make a new path below it and the contour lines really don't look any different? Than than to use the the path above?
The short answer is, my understanding is that path, the purple path raises in grade and then drops back down versus the one that's lower, kind of skirts that similar contour and stays at a fixed elevation.
But doesn't it go back up just to the left of that where it meets the contour lines start to get closer and closer?
See, see the right hand side of that purple line? See how it just goes straight up the fall line almost? That's not ADA.
It's definitely something that we'll have to look into.
This right here, this goes from here right up the fall line. That's not ADA right here.
But it's ADA over on the other side, cause it goes straight up the same steep. In fact, those contour lines are closer. I mean, it has a steeper grade. I don't think we can put in all these paths and keep the trees.
I'm just, I'm just curious why. I'm just trying to make sure we're not.
No, it's it's a great question and it's um there was definitely rhyme and reason why it was originally designed that way. And that's part of our homework is to make sure that it's not either redundant or um creating more inaccessible routes by fixing other ones. So.
And you looked at where trees are in relation to these paths, right?
Yeah, that was part of the original focus. Yeah, yeah.
Parks Board was very adamant that the trees not be removed as well.
I mean, we already have root problems with the existing paths. So you just gotta believe that wherever you're doing new stuff, we're gonna be introducing root problems and.
Right, that's.
Well, actually, you know, the problem is is that the paths are going right over, you know, some huge trees roots. And so to the extent that you can meet ADA and give that tree a little bit more uh, you know, grace, a little more space there uh is helpful. And and you know, the the trail won't buckle either, cause that's the biggest problem is with all these tree roots. You know, we're gonna have the same problem in ten years if we don't lay that in there in a way that is, you know, and that's why, I guess, you know, one of the suggestions I would have is for all the ADA stuff, I can see paving that. And again, making it so that you don't cut any new trees, but you also for the trees that you do have, you don't, you know, put it right up against where the roots are gonna buckle it um and still meet ADA. And then there's a need for these kind of secondary paths to kind of shortcuts and things like that that don't need to be ADA. And maybe consider going with, you know, pack gravel like Tickle Creek Trail with some binder on it so that you could, you know, so so that it's something that uh it'll be much cheaper to build and last longer and you just, you don't have the problems with the trees as much because you won't get the root buckling on the trail.
It is really threading the needle here and I think what everybody's touching on is absolutely right of um getting it, getting a trail that's accessible, not removing trees, but doing it in a way that, yeah, we're not doing this again in ten years because we did it right over some other trees roots. So.
Do you, are we planning to keep the staircase down from the middle of the parking lot? We have a nice little entryway there that we.
Yeah, yeah. So that stairway remains and then the accessible path goes to the east of it. From that, that jump off point.
There's, you know, there's, there's also staircase on that end of the parking lot and maybe, I mean, whenever I walk around there, I'm just like, you're like, I was telling her, I I went to go to the volunteer pick me up at night and I got the last parking lot space over there and I went down the little stairs and then it kind of peters out and then I, you know, just walked along and found myself on the wrong side of the creek and, you know, all the trails and not, but quite a few of the trails in there, like, like, for example, when you go to the Fantasy Forest from that upper parking lot, you see how it just kind of stops. It doesn't get, you know, and just kind of runs out of trail and you're like, okay, why did the trail end and we're not to the playground yet?
Yeah.
And so uh and there's another one where you're going over the bridge uh and like, oh, just going up to those structures and yeah, the trail just kind of.
I will say, while you're having just been to the park recently and watched a bunch of old men go from the uh drinking the beers to having to find the restaurant. That's a long walk.
There is a slide in a minute.
Yeah, so I mean, but I don't see that that path is shortened at all, but what we have posed there, I think there are opportunities to shorten that path further.
Yeah.
Should be considering.
Or or put in a second bathroom for the playground.
Which.
Yeah, cause I've I've run my little one over there, my grandkid over there, and that's a long walk too.
And that was feedback. I think we can go to the next slide. I think that was feedback that we got from both council and from the Parks Board was to consider a restroom, which was an option in some of the prior planning work. So this slide shows the very bottom of this slide is the existing lower parking lot. And there's a structure there that's a restroom, right? At the base of where No Name Creek ends, in essence. This slide's kind of interesting because it touches on a number of elements tonight. There is um a straight above the play area or sorry, the restroom there, there's an embankment slide that was proposed. And then above that is where the existing uh Fantasy Forest is. So kind of some good ideas that have been spoken to tonight. This slide touches on all those um. And it was feedback that we got from before about looking into potential locations for an additional restroom in the park that would complement the existing one, but really service a different side of the park.
Yeah, the kids can not make it at all. And that was the plan, but we didn't have enough money in two thousand seventeen eighteen. Um but when I saw the bathroom uh shelter combination over there at Cedar Park that you all just put in, that would be a really cool thing to have here because you kind of get that combination amenity there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I will point out that if you go with this lower bathroom, you get rid of an awful lot of the only flat space that's not currently occupied by something. Uh vision for Winter Fest down the road was to have a permanent, not permanent, but a semi-permanent top tent, you know, set up. That's where, that's the only place it could go.
You can go to the left of it there, right?
I'm just pointing out that you've used over fifty percent of that space and park didn't have to. But the way that's been shown this.
But I don't deserve action anyway, so.
That's true. It'd have to be a vault.
Uh the the fourth focus area to touch on briefly is the hillside seating and just to walk through this, on the left, we diagrammed out what the original planning effort had shown. So there's a series of, I think, five arced benches there nestled in into the trees and there were, there were some construction details that were developed at that time and we started looking at how that would be built and it just seemed like it was really gonna have a detrimental impact to a majority of those trees right in the middle of that area, which really blends uh establishes the character of that forested site. So we we took um a quick layout option on the right to see uh what it would be to really concentrate that in the middle, removing a few trees to establish some more hillside seating. Presented this slide as it is to the Parks Board and it started a really good conversation with them. I think to to take a step back and start to question the hillside seating concept in general and how we got here as a planning effort. And they, as has been said tonight, they were very adamant in their stance of do not remove trees. That's very important to the character of this space and it makes it what it is. And I guess furthermore, what is the demand for hillside seating in general? Because, you know, we just had a series of concerts and a series of movies and um I think it was John, John was saying it was like four hundred people came to the last concert. They all found good seating in this hillside. And and one of the questions or one of the observations from the Parks Board was, so we have these six events which which are great and well attended, but is that what should drive how we build out this whole hillside? And what's, really, what's the balance was what they wanted us to find out. What's the right balance of how much seating we provide for for those six events versus the other three hundred and fifty nine days of the year, I guess.
Well, I think it's also, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not asking for seating as much as I'm seeing a hillside that is completely compacted and bare ground. And so when you're trying to kind of go up or down it, you can't, you know, you can't maintain, I mean, it's not helping the trees because the ground is just like concrete. And then it's hard for, you know, younger or older people to kind of walk around it. And so trying to, I think we can have you know, protect the trees, but also kind of try to give us some, you know, first of all, decom- decompact the soil and make it so that we can kind of grow some, you know, native vegetation on there, even if it's just clover or, you know, oxalis or whatever, but try to kind of get some um some restoration on that side. I mean, it's just, it's a.
Yeah.
And so a- and you know, that may include just a few, you know, uh steps or something, sort of like what you did over there at Sandy Bluff Park or something, or just box steps or something to kind of get people down, cause you wanna, cause and and I mean, it's it's kind of deceiving here, but you know, you've got the staircase and you got those two shelters. And then you go to go see the park, you know, so when you see those two shelters to the left and then you're like trying to get, figure out where's, where do I, how do I get down to where my people are? And there's no real defined area and you just kind of, you know, willy nilly it. And so having something kind of a little bit more defined, if it's in the center or wherever it is, to kind of get people down towards the creek on a path that's not too steep. Or or if it is steep, then you've kind of put in a few little box steps to kind of, you know, let them walk and uh, you know, just kind of pardon something in a way that protects the trees, but gives people more accessibility. And then, and then once they get down those box steps, they can go to the left or the right wherever they're staying. You know, wherever they're sitting with their friends or whatever. So that's kind of, I think, was the idea. It wasn't to necessarily build seating like retaining walls and all that. It was kind of more natural um but but also improving accessibility for folks.
It's hard to go to the bathroom, dog looking for. Harder walking all the way up the hill and around the hill.
It's almost more of a problem of access, you're saying, than actual seating. It's just kind of focusing how people get there and so there's less.
Cause now they just go everywhere. And so, I mean, when there's, when there's no defined trail, they go everywhere and it all gets denuded.
Yep.
And so that's, that's kind of where, you know, that's what I would like to see. And it's hard because with Mount Festival, there's just so much stuff around. It all gets denuded.
Yeah.
Anyways, but but we have the ability to kind of restore it and stuff every few years.
And things grow less quickly in the shade that we have here.
And as if it's not on a steep hillside, then it'll, you know, have a chance to kind of regenerate.
Yeah.
And I haven't been to all these activities. I don't go to a lot, but the ones I've been to, maybe it's just telling the ones that appealed to me, but most of the clientele were my age or older.
Yeah.
And so it was interesting watching some people walk around and, you know, you kind of grimace as they stumble a little bit um.
Sound comfortable.
No, it, no, it's it's awkward. I I don't know, but I I also don't want to go solve a problem that's not a real problem solved, right? You know? So.
It's beautiful and stunning and
Yeah.
those other things.
Right, you know, you could make an amphitheater and take out all the trees, but then when you got, why don't, you know, at that point, just go and use the other amphitheater on the other side.
Yeah. So on the last focus area, we've actually really touched on this one already and that's the the lower parking lot here. The, there's faintly, you can see some striping that's shown there. This is not proposing any expansion of the paved areas, just redefining uh that parking lot there. And it has the opportunity to be used for a variety of different things. You know, it's for accessible parking, but it can also be a place for I think for food carts to set up shop or potentially for temporary uh porta potties or that type of thing to be staged there. And in tandem with that, so some bollards to separate it off from traffic as needed. And also just improving the lighting here, but then jumping into the additional focus areas, um electrical upgrades and lighting just throughout the park. And really trying to be strategic about those improvements. So when there's paving upgrades taking place, we think about the adjacent electrical upgrades and not be doing things twice in that, in that sense.
Uh Kelly, do we, no Kelly, what, um what that that property that's just to the south uh that's private land?
The apartments.
The apartments, cause that, what's the uh ac- access point for that?
To the left of this parking lot in that image or?
I'm looking at one of your other maps, um, cause this is.
Did the access to those, that new construction is gonna be off of mine?
Go back to that one. See how, see that, that where it says private property, that's what's all getting developed. And they, I think, are accessing the highway two eleven fr- from uh, you know, just from their property. I don't believe there's any tie through, is there?
Not through our parking lot. I mean, they would be accessing from two eleven.
So while you get that up, you're talking about lighting and having just walked down there with an eye uh from the, that yellow line extends today to the actual path. Bravel path comes all the way up to the Soldier Monument that we have there in the corner and the the road. There is no other walkway to get to that entire part of town. So if we're doing any sort of money in here, we have to make sure we're making this the actual sidewalk. It's gonna be there for a long time, cause the cost to put a real sidewalk along Minig is probably not cost effective. So we need lighting. I mean, it's incredibly dark to walk down there now.
Yeah.
The the only street light that's there is, is the trees have grown underneath it. So there's no light coming through to that log.
And just so I don't speak out of turn, I'll, I can check with Kelly too on what that development includes as far as connection from our property.
We better have a connection because there's
I don't know.
Functional right away today. I don't know how you guys are defending that, but.
Uh it's been quite some time since I attended meetings. And I think the developers may have even changed hands on that site, but when I was offered an opportunity, there was a path that was planned from that development connecting into our path and it was going to meet accessibility's requirements.
I mean, there's a current paved path there now that goes past that property.
Connects.
And goes, you know, yeah. Connects down to the park.
Personally.
I assume part of that may get changed, changed out with the sidewalk. You know, along the highway, I don't know.
I can definitely follow up with Kelly on that.
Lighting, bollards would be very appropriate going down through there, cause even though the park's closed after certain hours, that walkway is the only way to get to that, back to that part of town.
Good point.
Yeah.
There we are.
Yeah.
Part of these parking lot improvements too, I'll just add this in. You know, we host municipal court here twice a month. If we have any meetings where uh non-city staff are coming, our lower parking lot that's directly outside of this building is full of staff. So that lower lot can become a staff parking lot once it's actually upgraded and uh striped, well lit, some bushes removed, you actually staff feels safe using it and walking out there when it's dark at night. Um and then free up some spots here for patrons that are coming for meetings, for paying their utility bills, et cetera.
And you're thinking holistically, like budgetarily on what levers you can pull to make it happen though, right? Like, cause I mean, not all that has to come out of parks. I mean,
Absolutely not.
Like to improve this maybe or whatever, I think on that, but whatever fun, like you're looking at it thinking easier to access, heart restricted, all those kinds of things.
I will point out, Tyler, we just bought you a really nice parking lot.
Yes.
Only a block away.
Sure, absolutely. We've got uh uh ample parking in that sense. This one also, uh as it was mentioned, gets used for all of our uh food and beverage um carts during our events. Or uh we had the um, uh I forget the name of the the setup that we had to Winterfest, the Alvin Rose um items there. And so, you know, having a flat, well lit, good electrical sources in that lot for all the other events and amenities that we provide will be. Um great one.
You indicated this was the last like park improvement slide, is that right?
Yeah, correct.
So then on the power, like, has there been any consideration to that? Or is there even a need for that gazebo, right? The gazebo that's rented out for community stuff and we seem to set up different community events in there. What's the power like in there? Does that need improvements, that lighting, whatever? And then my last plug is for that, that little theater uh stage back there. It's like, just go back there and stand there and stare at it. It is beautiful and we never use it and I I I'm never invited, at least it plays back there. You know, and I don't know if it's because um the power sucks on that stage or the lighting does or like. I'd love to know why people aren't using it, maybe we don't advertise it, maybe there's a reason we don't know about why a group doesn't want to use it. But I mean, it is, I'm sorry, it's just, I say, I think I pull you to the side and tell you this yourself, sorry, every time we're down there. But it is stunning and no one ever uses it.
I think the lack of a cover is a big, definitely in our weather.
The cover?
A lack of a cover, at least over a stage area, and you know, similar to the the one we have next to the creek, smaller, but you know.
So I I just, and I don't have the answer, but I'd love to know what it is, you know, is is it just what, cover, power? You know, just just maybe ask some questions or figure out what it is, but I just, I've. And I'd love to go to a Shakespeare site, I'd love on a nice night in the summer, sitting there would be unbelievable.
But once again, lighting, get over to that part of the park, it's dark, you know, so you'd have to bring lighting in there to make it safer. Uh and probably all the way up to those various trail exits and entrances.
Yeah, and it's really apparent that with, I mean, we we have a list as long as my arm with all the things that we want to do. This is our showcase park here um and it really is going to require phasing um and prioritizing things and.
Some donations.
Donations, there's also, like, I, Rochelle, maybe you're going to cover this, but the, you know, to do the no name restoration, that's, that's a salmon. You know, that's a stream habitat restoration project, it's not salmon habitat, or it could, you know, but there's money out there for stream restoration money. We actually talked about using that, doing that project when we had to pay our uh, you know, uh.
Consent decree.
Uh, yes, not our uh vine or whatever, um restoring that and they decided to do it on Tickle Creek because it was closer. But, you know, stuff like that, there's, there's money out there for that project, like you said, the urban renewal for the, or other funds for the parking lot. And so we don't have to, you know, have it all come out of, out of parks, but even within the parks, I think there's going to be a need to kind of prioritize. And, you know, perhaps, I don't know if you guys already have this all lined out, but the sandy net and and getting, you know, doing the lighting and the sandy net stuff. You know, when you're tracked, when you're uh running line and all, you know, underground drilling and stuff, you know, is is something you can do kind of at the same time. Uh with, you know, two birds with one stone type of thing, so I don't know, um, I'm excited. It's a, it's a long time in coming out and I just hope we can kind of prioritize things and, you know, it's going to be a ten year plan probably to get it all done. But that's okay, yeah.
Cool. All right, anything else? Well, thank you, that was fun, that was a fun conversation, excited to hear what the community has to say about it, it's a special project, special park, so. Thanks for your work.
Yeah.
All right, uh moving ahead to another park development conversation. Uh in our new business, we have the contract to work for the Deer Point Park Development Phase Two.
Okay, well, this is um Deer Point Park Two, um Phase Two. And as the councils aware, we've been working on Phase One for Deer Point Park. And so tonight, the question before the council is whether to award Phase Two of the Deer Point Park Development to Langau Hansen Landscape Architects. And just wanted to um talk a little bit about Phase One and um Langau Hansen uh did an exemplary job with our Phase One. Part of um Deer Point, which involved um a robust public engagement, there were um open houses, we brought it before the Parks Board, brought it before council. And we landed on a thirty percent um or a preferred concept that resulted in a thirty percent construction documents. And that was the end of our Phase One. And just as a reminder, some amenities that went into Phase One for Deer Point, um we did land on a full court basketball. We did hear the council not exploring the idea and the cost for a covered basketball court were important, then ended up in the final concept. There's the meandering trail that has a combination of um native plants off to the east side of it. That um uh complement the trees that we're trying to keep. And then there's a play structure and we just recently actually sent out a survey to the neighbors of Deer Point to receive their feedback on the play structure. That will um end up in that area.
Is that, you you said, you sent the questionnaire?
Yep.
And it's all done now?
We are still receiving them back, yeah, so we sent out about two hundred.
And you just mailed them hard copy?
We did, yeah, yeah.
And did you give them kind of options like what you did with us on mining or?
Yep, exactly, yeah, and then asked for feedback on what they would like to see and so we'll, we'll have those results, but.
Cool.
Um so fa- Phase Two is a continuation of Phase One and it encompasses encompasses the completion of our construction doc- documents. It'll take it through a hundred percent construction documents, it'll go through, um the second phase includes permitting, land use. It'll be bidding support and then um one of the things we're looking at pretty closely are utility extension and right away improvements. Uh being we're right next door to a development, we're just south of twenty-six, so um we're taking a very close look at that and meeting. And have met with development services quite frequently to get some of those questions answered and Langau Hansen has been part of those conversations. So we've had really good direction and feedback from development services on how to best try to navigate those. And then Phase Two will include construction oversight and then finally completion of the park. So staff is requesting tonight that they authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to award Phase Two of the Deer Point Park Development. To Langau Hansen Landscape Architects, one for their outstanding performance that this department feels they've um performed for previous parks. And as a continuation from Phase One to Phase Two, it results in consistency and continuing. Can um continuity between um the design and the construction phase. And then lastly, again, they're very versed in the Sandy Municipal Code permitting and to wrap it up, this is um something that can be done with the ORS. And a direct appointment, it just needs to be approved by council.
Cool, I think should do this, I'll entertain a motion, but one thing I wanted to ask though is, uh these courts, they always just go to basketball, you know, I've noticed. But they're great at, why do, do we do anything ever to bring in netting for volleyball or then pickleball or? To like, are there things that we do to increase the activity of sports that can be done?
Yeah, and I can start to answer this and I'm glad you're here to help answer this. Um but one of the things that uh basketball courts can serve is um you can bring in pickleball and some nets. We did do early on in um my employment here, we did explore the idea of other basketball courts serving as pickleball courts. That didn't go anywhere, but it is an option to add multiple uses to those, those sports courts, so.
Yeah, or designated weekends or.
Yeah, no, definitely, and I think as a part of the outreach, we put a lot of those options on the table with the public. And the feedback that we got was headed in the direction of basketball, but it is part of that process of outreach.
It's kind of a programming thing too, I think, right, like you do Thursday night pickleball on such and such basketball.
Yeah, but that would be great, that would be great.
It's cool. I'm missing the thirty percent design, is that posted on, it's on the website?
Oh, we can absolutely post the thirty percent CDs online, yeah.
The thirty percent was the July drawings, right? Yeah.
Mayor, yeah, I'm, I moved to authorize the. Moved to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement to award Phase Two of the Deer Point Project Park Development Project to Langau Hansen. Landscape Architects as included in the meeting back.
For a second.
Second.
Motion by councillor Maintenance, second by councillor Sheldon, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh opposed nays, motion carries, thank you so much, you guys.
Happy birthday.
All right, let's move ahead to the uh declaration of the city council vacancy for seat number five.
Uh, okay, thank you, mayor, um as the council is well aware, um former speaker, Colonel Carl Exner. Uh announced his resignation at the most recent uh council meeting, obviously he served the city so ablely so well for so long. Um that was in front of the council tonight is two items, first of all, the declaration. Uh of the vacancy of the seat, which is required uh by the charter before anything else can proceed. And then the next item on the agenda, of course, is the process for filling it, but in front of you right now at this moment. Um what we need is just a motion to declare the seat vacant and then we can take further steps to fill the vacancy.
I move to declare the Sandy City Council Seat Number Five be vacant effective immediately.
I second it.
There's a uh motion by councillor Sheldon and a second by councillor Walker uh to declare seat five vacant. So it's, wish it wasn't, wish we weren't, sad, sucks. Um, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, motion carries.
Especially sad in circumstances.
Yeah. All right, moving ahead to the adoption of the process to fill the vacancy of city council seat number five.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and so just to follow up on that, so now that the seat is formally vacant, uh the city council rules. Uh designate a process or well, lay out the elements uh of a process that council needs to adopt uh to fill it. As you can see in the staff report, it's basically, um we need to advertise the opportunity widely. Um staff is proposing a timeline that would include about three weeks of advertisement, which is consistent with what we do for advisory boards and similar opportunities. Uh we would post on the website, we would put it out in the Sandy Source Newsletter, I mean, we would make sure it's widely advertised. Um then what you can see in the proposed process is that uh we would receive those applications. We would put them in front of the city council to consider who to bring forward for public interviews. It's important to remember that all of this is a public process, so the interviews would be during a city council work session, they're not private, they're. I mean, it's an uh, it's a city council position, so it needs to be public. Um, so I'm sorry, I need to look forward to um, yeah, so the interviews are proposed to take place. On the twenty-first of October, so the meeting before that would be when the council would be reviewing the applications to decide who to interview. Um, so review the applications on the seventh, uh interview the applicants on the twenty-first. If you have a candidate that you like at that time, you can appoint someone effective immediately. Or the council could decide to sleep on it, consider it the next meeting, call a special meeting, you can do whatever you want uh in terms of that.
So, but we would interview them in a work session?
So that's.
Then call a formal council meeting and announce it then.
What I would propose, we could work with the mayor, obviously, and this is, um the interviews would take place during that six o'clock hour on the twenty-first. And then I assume there would be an item on the agenda later that evening to make an appointment.
Thanks, I just, thanks, just.
Uh I'm happy to answer any questions, um hopefully it's pretty straightforward.
All right, seeing no questions, oh, of course, you can always have discussion or we can entertain a motion to adopt the process.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, well, this.
We have uh an election coming up, we have candidates that are running for election. Um, can a candidate that's running for election apply to be to the seat?
I don't think you can specific, I think any individual councillor or can adopt whatever criteria for their selection. Of a councillor they want, but I don't know that it's within our legal purview to.
Excluding, you know.
Yeah, exclude.
They just have to look all the requirements for this position, but in Sandy, City of Sandy, which I don't think is part of the election department, but right?
No, I pointed out, I pointed out, we have application evaluation criteria. Right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was?
We have application evaluation criteria, so we could put something on there if that's an important thing to us, because the the trickle down. You would just be creating this domino effect potentially of issues, so.
I could go there, I'm good, yeah.
My only thing would be if you can, like, where you prevent somebody from flying.
Yeah, be part of your evaluation criteria. Uh, Chris to see, yeah, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a little sidebar about. Um living in the city candidate versus uh this, it's all the same.
It's, yeah, I should have said that on the record, that's true, the criteria are the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or I'm saying not a criteria, the the minimum qualification.
Yes, yeah, it's the same.
Okay, all right, all right, so a motion, Lori?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, let's see, I'm sorry, I was prepared, now I'm not. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the process for filling the vacancy of position five.
For a second.
I'll second it.
Motion from councillor uh Smallwood, a second by councillor Walker to adopt the process to fill the vacancy for city council seat number five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, motion carries, all right, thank you for that. Uh Tyler, report from the city manager.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, a couple of updates here, um the pedestrian that was struck uh by a vehicle on Friday. Um is in stable condition thankfully, not uh, you know, it was a pretty um bad accident that, you know, backed up traffic for quite a while. But also severely injured that individual and so we're happy to hear that they're in stable condition today. Um had a question earlier this evening about the demolition of.
Tell us, I'm sorry, why?
Um, Chief Husky can fill in the blanks here from your, my understanding was he had left the action center, was crossing the intersection.
In a crosswalk?
In a crosswalk and was struck by a vehicle.
And was the vehicle traveling too fast?
That I would have to defer to.
License, legal, everything good? Was there a blind spot, you not paying attention? I mean, I'm asking because we've been carpeting on the the problem spots up and down this street now for about four years since I've been here.
It's it's my understanding that a vehicle stopped for the pedestrian and when the other vehicle approached, it didn't see the pedestrian. And and then they hit, so there's no speeding ball, no impaired driving.
So when one stop, one car stops, one comes flying past and clips.
And that driver was cited and that driver, me, who drove here and paid the citation.
Okay, thanks, not your issue, but I'll get to my report.
Yep. Um, in that same vein, I think I mentioned this in a weekend update uh several weeks ago, what we did engage with our traffic engineer on. Um identifying the best locations for traffic feedback signs, that work is underway, um we were initially. Provided an estimate, estimate of about six weeks to get that work done, I think it's been about four weeks since we met with them last, so we should have. Uh some data here in the next couple of weeks about where the best possible potential sites are for traffic um feedback signs. And then we can move forward with getting those installed. Um, they're relatively inexpensive to acquire, we just need to go through ODOT's permitting process since it is uh in the right of way. So we'll continue to work on that and follow up with the engineer.
I'm sorry, are we talking about putting those on twenty-six?
Yeah, the conversation um that we've had was uh some more visual feedback, so people are aware of what they're, the speed they're traveling at.
Um trailers, murled on on poles.
Is this like what we have on two eleven?
Exactly, yeah, thank, that's a.
Right.
Uh.
So they're not on trailers, they're actually, yeah.
Yeah, instead of just putting out the temporary trailer like the police department has, working on getting some permanent uh.
Distracting.
Traffic.
I also think it's.
But that doesn't record anything, right?
It does not, no, it's just the driver feedback, so ensuring that they're aware of how fast they are traveling. Um if the council would like to have a conversation around um. Uh enforcement of those.
No, I I I just, I just want to make sure that I I understand twenty-six is is a, is a thorough way. I also know that, you know, given the time of day, traffic backs up, speed isn't an issue. Sometimes when it comes to that, feeling the need to stop when another vehicle has stopped and not making sure that pathway is clear in this case. So, so it's kind of like we're going to spend money on a problem. Uh when we have other spots with, that's why I asked if it was on twenty-six, when we have other spots within the city that I'm one hundred percent. Uh supportive of it, I just don't know that twenty-six, highway twenty-six is that location, so um that's, that's what I said. So I've been, I've been pushing this for a long time.
Today, so maybe in there.
Yeah, so I've been pushing this a long time because speed is an issue and often it's the commercial trucks.
Yeah.
And things that are, should know better, coming flying through there. And I think it contributes to the red light running. Well, I won't, I won't disagree, we have some red lights and stuff, but I also say we have done, we have put driver feedback uh out there with. We have put driver feedback uh out there with a very low percentage of vehicles that are actually speeding.
But that's my point, it's working.
No, I I don't think, I think what it is is, uh, and I'll just say from my driving, I don't see, I drive that way every day, and I don't see people's behavior changing. Because of that sign out there. What I do see is um big trucks. That are heavy, that look like they're going really fast, and they aren't. And I would argue that maybe even some that has to do with ODOT in the in the their uh, the timing of their traffic lights with how long the yellow is, giving the driver ample time. To slow down. But I just gotta say from my own experience of of not only living out here, but also working out here for a substantial time. I don't see speed through Sandy on highway twenty six. Being as relevant as it is on some of the other side of streets. So, would be my state.
So here's my point, my counter, proposing other streets, so I've been pushing for this one for uh two and a half years. It's cheap. It has demonstrated. You know, there are statistics that show that it slows down drivers. And we just had another accident that might have. If somebody was just a little more aware, I don't know if a flashing light would make that particular person more aware or not. But. We gotta change something, because. People are, you know, we will have more accidents, we will have more people hurt. I can get behind the red lights, I can get behind enforcement, and one of the things that I would, I've been also advocating for. Is that we apply, and I'm hoping that our new current administration will do this, that we apply for the grants that we haven't seemed to have been applying for through Oregon Impact. Uh, and get some grants, I will happily vote for and support matching the funds of those grants for overtime for specifically around traffic enforcement. Issues to include pedestrian operations. Um, but that seems to be something, to Don's point, I agree, and I'm not trying to steal anybody's report, but. We have, we have not chose, we have not made that a priority, and I think what we're doing is we're trying to force something. I do think that enforcement is a key. Avenue of that, and we're not even, we haven't even explored that in the past, and I hope that. This will make us move that, because. There's there's speed, there's pedestrian enforcement, there's seatbelt, there's uh distracted driving, there's a lot of stuff out there. That we can improve that, which I think will have a better impact on holistic driving as opposed to just focusing on speed. Which is my thoughts.
And we'll wait and see what the report says from the traffic engineer, I mean, perhaps it will say that speed isn't an issue, and those those uh driver feedback signs. Won't benefit, or it will say that, so we'll we'll have some information in the next couple of weeks. Um, I'm also gonna reach out to ODOT and just uh learn more about the process for the flashing. Uh, like yellow light uh crosswalks. Now, there's only, um, I think one. Truly painted designated sidewalk in that downtown area between Bluff and Ten Eyck, and it's where this person was struck by a vehicle, so. If we're only going to have one that's painted and one that's, you know, truly a marked crosswalk, let's make it a marked crosswalk that is the safest as possible.
If you have a flashing yellow light, though, you're gonna have more aptitude drivers, and I only bring it up, my daughter, four years ago, was T-boned on beers coming across. When one car stopped and the other car did not, and it was. They weren't speeding, um, she didn't look far enough past the next car and got T-boned. And I I was upset about that same thing, but I can only imagine the pedestrian coming. They also have accountability to their awareness of the cars on that road. Uh, a flashing yellow light had been going, I bet that driver would have been more apt to see that. Um, and mayor may not have slowed down, but you're just projecting.
Yeah, I mean, I walk through downtown almost daily, and. I don't almost get struck because I know to only walk halfway in the intersection, and then, you know, make sure that next car is stopping.
And that's what I was, you do have to make sure as a pedestrian.
Yeah.
That vehicles have stopped.
Yes.
So.
But I will say that I think oftentimes drivers don't know to stop. Because they assume that car is slowing because they're turning, or you know, they don't, they can't see the pedestrian on the next side, so if there's a way to make that more visual and and bring more. Attention to it, I think that could definitely help. Um, prevent another accident in the future, so we'll continue to look in that, look into that. Um, I received a question earlier in the uh evening about the demolition of uh what's been called the old bunkhouse on a nearby. Uh, the parking lot in the church down there. Demolition hasn't taken place yet, we have the contract with the homeowner um ready to execute and move forward. They are just waiting for the utilities to be capped from an outside utility company, not the city of Sandy. Um, and so as soon as that's done, the demolition can take place, but that will happen in near future.
Thought you said bunker building.
No, bunkhouse, bunkhouse, not bunker building. If I said bunker building, I apologize, bunkhouse.
Did you miss that reading?
Um, no, sorry, not trying to to jump ahead here. Um. Uh, a reminder that um we have the legislative priority survey that's been sent out to you guys, uh, the due date for that is September sixth, so we can incorporate all of your feedback and get it on. Uh, the following council agenda to submit that feedback to LOC. Um, got a meeting with Love One this Thursday to see firsthand the laundry event that they're doing at the Seater's um. Laundromat. Uh, I had a great meeting with Brandy from Love One last week, was able to kind of um. You know, start the building of that relationship there, um, acknowledge a novel of our side that there hadn't been good communication, and so we've kind of. Remedied that, um, got some good plans going forward as far as uh touch points and and continuing that conversation. Um, so I'll go to the event this Thursday with Brandy, check things out, see how that is run, what services are all being provided, and then be able to report back to the council with. Um, how that goes. Just checking, checking my notes here really quick, um. We have, I should have mentioned this at the urban renewal meeting, but there's not a. Uh, report section for me to provide, uh, we have turned off uh the online applications for the tenant improvement grants and the facade improvement grants. Uh, for the time being, so we can. Circle back and have a more robust conversation around the objectives of those programs and the the future of those programs, so. The two that went before uh the board this evening are the last two that we had in the hopper, there aren't anything else that's currently outstanding. Um, so we won't have any other grants um. Coming before you unless someone reaches out to us specifically and says, hey, I've got this project I'm working on, is there an opportunity for grant for grant funding? And we would navigate that uh similar to how we did with the demolition project that came before the board uh several weeks back.
Mayor, do we anticipate doing that before the election, or would that be a new year kind of thing? And mayor candidates, do we have a preference uh on the timing of that? For what's um, for goal setting and for.
I I think we should probably talk for the election.
So probably a January twelfth, February.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have um, I've entered into an agreement with Elaine Howard, who I believe some of you have met previously, she's spoken. Uh, represented the council before, some of you have not met her, she's sort of the urban renewal guru for the state of Oregon. Um, she does contract work for nearly every city that has an urban renewal agency. Um, so we have a, we had a contract with her several years ago, uh, her and I have been in contact over the last month or so. Um, and looking at putting together a meeting to talk about prioritization and projects, and then using that meeting to really. Craft the beginning stages of like a five-year strategic plans, but we can use that information, build it into the budget process, have some good direction on what our initiatives are, priorities are. Of course, we can further discuss timeline and things like that once we have that meeting, that that was sort of how the conversation with Elaine got kicked off, that we've. Have an urban renewal, you know, agency, we've done some really exciting things, but it's time to um have to check in, figure out where we're going, what needs to be done, and and get the whole board.
So. So I think it's prudent and good to close those off, but I would say though that that doesn't mean that those opportunities don't still exist.
Absolutely.
And so like if something, an opportunity that I, we don't foresee or see right now. Um, presents itself, whether it's a new owner of a building that now wants to do something or whatever, um. We should remember those programs and the things we can do with urban renewal and try to make things go online.
Absolutely, it's just not a free uh available form for someone to, you know, fill out and like submit, and that's. How some of these things have happened in the past, where they submit their, you know. Uh, interest in the grant, and then the economic development manager at the time had started to work with those business owners, and then that gets us to where we're at this evening with. Uh, with those grant projects that you saw. Um. And last but certainly not least, uh, I shared this on Friday with you in the weekend update, but um extended a job offer to a candidate for finance director. We've worked through all of the uh hiring process there and background checks and all that stuff, uh, and so Tyler Wallace will start at the end of October. Um, make it easy for you, you don't have to remember any name, can just keep saying Tyler when you think of finances. Uh, he comes from the city of Portland, um, their department of revenue, um, so really excited to have his. Background and expertise joining us here in Sandy, um, and also selfishly very excited to no longer be doing two jobs. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Tom?
Well, heard most of my concern about the the safety issues, I do think, um, I know it's. I I hear what you're saying about maybe it's not the best deterrent, or maybe it's maybe not even effective, but. Personally, when I drive into a town. Even if I'm familiar with it, like going down Kane Street, two fifty seventh there and and Gresham, that light hits me, I check my speedometer, now maybe. I'm one in a hundred people that do that, but I think there's more, I think people do check. And they slow down, and one of the the biggest areas that I see. Uh, lack of compliance for speed is toll gate, the speed limit changes well before you go to the two one ways. And uh. There's very low compliance coming off off there from that transition, so I think making people aware before they get into the the area is is important. So when you're looking for locations, I think if you're putting a flashing light halfway through town, I think we missed the point. It's, they need to be aware coming into town, this this is the speed limit. The second point I brought up many times is every. Crosswalk, the state law says, you know, that you have the right, as soon as you enter the the traffic. You know, the cars are supposed to stop, which the other unwritten part of it is you have the right to get hit. By doing so, but I don't know why we don't have more paved, more painted crosswalks. I don't understand why we have beautiful ADA compliant on and offs into the sidewalks. From the roads without any painted stripes, to me, that's, that's just, doesn't make sense at all, so. Um, why would we want somebody in a wheelchair going that way when we don't want us, our kids to walk that way? So. I look forward to that explanation, uh, lastly, uh. I mean, Rochelle's gone, but we need to get that Winterfest committee, volunteer committee going, we have not met.
Yes, um.
It's like September.
Yeah, so I know that they put a call for volunteers out, that doesn't include the volunteers we've already had, but they put a call for volunteers out, um. My understanding is that no volunteers um. Identify themselves as interested to help when that call for volunteers went out, so they will move forward with meeting with volunteers.
See such an inquiry. Now, I'm not on Facebook every day. But I don't know where the call went.
Yeah, Jeff.
I saw it on Facebook for sure.
That's where it's not, I don't recall if it was in the newsletter or not, and um.
It doesn't matter, uh, I just.
Yeah.
I don't know that went that far.
I didn't see it.
We can certainly put another call for volunteers out.
Cause. Santa. Santa didn't see. No, I mean, are you in for this year?
Yeah, I'm trying my hardest.
Okay, all right.
Hi, yeah, the library board uh folks are meeting tomorrow, and they've got a lot of reports about um just progress they've made on uh. They're called strategic plan reports um for all their initiatives, create young readers, stimulate imagination. Information fluency civics, satisfy curiosity, learn to read and write, and computer literacy are their different uh. Uh, goals there. Um, so I'll find out more about that, the homeless camp uh situation, I've been uh working with Scott. Scott Trippanera, and uh he is a uh the guy that started that Sandy Trash Force and has been very helpful. Um, we've gone out a couple of times there uh recently on industrial way to kind of help. To to clean up some of the messes, and I really appreciated the response that we got from uh Sergeant Craven and Officer. Uh. It was Armando. Almost, almost, yeah. Bring, get up there, um. They were very helpful, um. Kind of what's happening is that. Um, we've got folks, you know, that are directed out there, and then they head in off the sidewalk and off the road into the private property. Um, and take a lot of stuff that gets dumped in there, um, so one of the things that um. We might suggest, again, it's kind of up to guys to see how you want to deal with it, but. Um, normally when somebody has private property out somewhere and there's a trespassing issue or something, it's the landowner's responsibility to post those no trespassing signs. However, in this case, where we're directing people to, you know, stay down there. I feel like we have a little bit more of a higher threshold um to take responsibility and possibly put up some no trespassing signs along. Um, both sides of the road there. Um, another option that we thought might be helpful would be to have, I I think we do have a handout, but um. Having a handout that basically talks about the regulations that are in place and the need to do, you know, to take care of your trash. And the fact that that will be enforced, because again, what we're seeing is folks are, you know, staying out there for weeks and the, it's just piling up. And a huge amount. Um, and or they're littering just right, you know, it's so obvious, it's all over the road and sidewalk and everything else, so it's obviously, um. They're violating our our regulations, and so trying to get a handle on enforcing that so that we all don't have as big of a job to do. Um, and then I would like to see us get a formalized volunteer agreement with the Sandy Trash Force, just so they understand. What the roles and responsibilities are of all of you, and what you want them to do, and you know, the sideboards on that. And you know, where do we take the trash, and how does that get, you know, and all that, so just having a little bit more formalization to that, so that they can all be part of the. Partnership, it'd be really good.
Yeah, I talked to Scott on Saturday about some of those things, and so we'll, we'll work on that.
The rock trucks uh for the city of Portland uh filtration plant are going by uh gangbusters. Um, the other, the the agreement that they have is that Oregon Trail Academy, Kelso School. Um, have limits, they can't go, uh, they cannot um. Use the um, go by those areas during pickup and drop off during school days. Um, somehow Cedar Ridge Middle School was taken off, was not on that list, so we need to get it back, put on the list so that there is some. Uh, uh, you know, cause that was, it's, you know, I could hear them going by at eight o'clock this morning, and just, I just sat there drinking my coffee, wondering how bad it was up at. The middle school, um. So, yeah, we need to add the Cedar Ridge to the exception list, um, finally, the water status, um, the. Uh, we did have a meeting, and I don't know if we've updated it, but I thought just kind of, it's always good to hear this more than once. The ninety percent design on the water pipeline is um being worked on, the. Pump station for the Bull Run is uh for ours, is uh this design package is sixty percent, um, the disinfectant. Package is underway at thirty percent. And they're uh working with the Portland Water Bureau on ongoing project details. Um, the land use discussions are also ongoing, they're gonna need a land used amendment in both Clackamas and Longahama Counties for us. Because I guess some of that stuff is in Eau County, um. They think the application for the pipeline will be late fall and early winter, and the pump station will be December, January timeframe. The uh. Current plan for building the pipeline, bidding the pipeline is late twenty twenty four, early twenty five. Uh, with construction complete in summer of twenty twenty five, um, they do. And the the, excuse me, the pump station and the disinfection stuff are are um later on into twenty twenty five. And um, complete in quarter three of twenty twenty seven. They are kind of concerned about, you know, that all this stuff will not be done by the compliance date of September twenty twenty seven. Um, we don't know, you know, I mean, there's just no guarantees with all the things uh up in the air on. On some of the processes, so as such, they're planning to have the Alder Creek Water Treatment Plant at full capacity of two plus million gallons per day in twenty twenty six. So that we can meet Sandy's daily demand with no curtailment um until June or July of twenty twenty eighth, so we're gonna be covered there. That's it, thanks. And I do, I do want to say, I thought it might be nice that we can get um Carl a some sort of a recognition thing.
Absolutely, yeah, Jeff and I have talked about that, we'll um, I should have mentioned that in my report, but we'll work on getting uh something put in place for councillor.
And thanks for the Cedar uh Park uh tour, that was fabulous.
Yeah, I want to start by saying I owe Don an apology, when he was talking twenty six, I was picturing. The the downtown corridor, I do agree with that, that as it drops over by the toll gate, I can get behind that one. Uh, I I'd wanna throw that out there right now, I owe you apology for that spot, I agree, but I do think as we get down into that corridor, red lights and all of that. I really want to. But I do think as we get down into that corridor, red lights and all of that, I really want to stress that I think we need to apply. This off to uh for some grants uh from, I know Oregon Impact is who runs them. I know Chief Husky is very involved versus in that sort of plan. Um, with that being said, uh, the parking lot. Um, I'm just wondering if we're going to, I know we had talked about the one we bought. About monetizing it, about making it so it's not just a uh extra business parking spots. Uh, I'm just wanting, I want to check in and see where we're gonna be at with that sometime.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to um dive into the Parking Kitty or some sort of similar, you know, uh app like that. Um, we do have the public parking, you know, sign up now when it is noticed um in.
There are some with cooler names, they're Parking Kitty.
That's the one that comes to mind because I use that for blazer games. So. But yes, we can uh um, as an example, right? Uh, we have changed the language in um our our transit. Um, handouts to signify that as public parking or park and ride. Um, but there's still work that needs to be done to to figure out how to monetize that for longer duration parking.
Yeah, it's not even so much the the money, I think, is, I I do not want to get away from that, but I also have concerns, especially as we develop a. Multi-family housing over there and the and the challenges that typically come with parking as that becomes like a fall over parking spot for that, I don't want it to be. So that's my concern there.
Yeah, there's currently signage for no camping or overnight parking in there. Uh, so we're trying to prevent that from taking place. I don't want it to become a. You know, a place where things just get dumped or left behind or chronic nuisances uh occur. We're not having any of those issues right now.
I did put it on Google Maps, parking, public parking.
Alright, thank you.
I do want to use this opportunity to reply to the uh person who spoke today about SDCs. I would like to also just note. SDCs are typically what allow us to keep fees low because that's our chance to get some of our. Our money back that we would be paying for that infrastructure. Thus, we don't have to bill our residents, which has always been my plight to keep SDCs up. So that we don't have to pass those costs on to residents. So. I just wanted to add that. And then I also wanted to say thank you to you and Rochelle and to John as well. Um, and then the two gentlemen from. The, for the tour, Cedar Park, um, was exciting. Um, like I said, I'm gonna up the Aflac for my own kid. Um, because I'm sure I'll, I'll be getting a chance to use it after seeing some of that, but it is super cool. I'm excited to see that. So I think there's a lot of future potential. So thank you for that opportunity. That's all I got.
Right. Well, I gave you a perks update, but you guys just got double perks thing that, so I sat through that twice, so. Um, good. It's still good, but it's, yeah. Um, but I did have a question on. The capacity or ability that we might have to. Um, some of you perhaps in the neighborhoods that you live in are getting hit by solicitors. What I think is very late at night, I've had people knock into my door at eight forty five, almost nine o'clock about solar panels. Um, I've had a few people reach out to me that their no soliciting signs are being ignored, no trespassing signs are being ignored. Um, I know in the last two weeks, I've had four different companies selling solar panels come to my door. So I don't know if we can look at something in our code that maybe I recognize, you know, I'm all in favor of people trying to make a living. And I I understand that there's probably a lot of people who, you know, want to buy solar panels and um, but maybe a time when it's, when it's. Like too late to 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 pester people in the evenings?
Yeah.
Or something that we can do that helps, you know, alleviate that in some capacity.
Yeah, Counselor Walker asked um a question about what's in our code, what's allowable. Um. Uh, I guess over the weekend I saw it uh earlier today. Um, we don't really have anything in place currently, but we can definitely look into see what other cities are doing as far as soliciting hours, time of day. Business license types, anything like that, so we can uh do some homework to figure out what what options we have.
Just so people don't feel like they're being harassed in their homes.
For sure.
So. That's all.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll be quick. Um, we did not have an economic development meeting. There was a planning commission meeting, although um my father passed away in Tennessee. Fifteen days ago, so I, I had to leave town for quite a while, so I did not attend that meeting. And I haven't had a chance to review the notes on it yet, but I will do that tomorrow and then bring it up in our planning mission for next council meetings. So, other than that, everything else I had to say is very consensual.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry to hear about your dad. Um, uh, not much to report on uh for me, just I've talked to Tyler about trying to get a work session with uh Chief Husky on. Our time, place, and manner, a lot of the issues that you were just talking about Kathleen. Uh, just all get on the same page, right? New leadership coming in out of the police department. We have a vision as to. Uh, how we want things kind of handled and done. We've had Supreme Court decision that was made, obviously there's state law, but. There's all those things. It's just all get in a room and talk about it. So. Uh, that's it. With that, everybody enjoy your, oh, back to schools, great. Drop kids off this morning. I was like early, so I didn't see many traffic. Issues from my end. I don't know if anybody else heard any, but it it looked pretty.
I know at the high school today, uh, there were two officers that were standing at the entrance down there, so, um, yeah.
So I think the parking or the the arrangement that we've worked out alleviated some problems, not all the problems unveiled, definitely work in progress.
Oh, um, oh, and I don't know if it's public works or what, and it was mentioned on social and I I actually. Totally did it the wrong way coming here this evening. So there is some manhole work or something done on the barco. There's a bunch of stuff cone off. Especially when you're coming out of my neighborhood, which I guess, you know, since we don't want to share our addresses, one eight seven five one Pacific Avenue, Sandy, Oregon. A lot more on the spotlight than a lot of people in this community and criticized. Um, but, yeah, so it's. Just trying to fix it because it's not well marked. You go around the. Uh, it's hard to tell if you go to the left of the cones or right of the cones. Almost hit a car straight onto it. He waved, we waved, like he could tell it was confused, but.
This is on the barco?
Yeah, so confusing. So it's right outside of Timberline Trails.
Right.
With the shadow from the trees, it was really bad.
Yeah, yeah, it's bad. So.
Alright, and we should slow down the traffic maneuver right now, right? Appreciate everybody.